Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Discussing or take action on Bill number 2013-05, Ordinance Number 800, and ordinance and amendments to City of Fairview, Tennessee municipal code title B, Alcoholic Beverages Chapter 2 Beer Section 8220 and 8222, prohibited conduct and activities of beer board, beer permit holders and supervision and revocation of beer permits.
Make the motion for approval.
Second.
Just to clarify that for you, Ms. Chairman, this is the ordinance revision that I promised you guys back when we were doing, setting up for the hearings for the violations. And all it basically does is, a lot of it's house cleaning, but what it does is it brings our ordinance up to the state standard. One of the things I remember in the other one when we were having the hearings, we were limited at that time on the, on the fine. The statute had been since changed from $1,500 to $2,500. You can do less than what the state says, which can't do more. That brings that up. It also brings it up to date with the, because if you remember several, the people said they were going to take the program for responsible vendors. I don't know whether they did or not. That's not my concern. But it allows, and we could not enforce other than what the state had on it anyway, but our ordinance should match what the state is, and that it basically does that. It's basically housekeeping.
Thank you.
I have one more piece of question on this. It kind of relates to this. I got a call from a gentleman that was involved in, in the program that we had, and this was from one of the liquor stores. I'll just tell you who it was. And he went through the process with our Bureau of Sessions Court, paid his fine, went to the ABC class, did that, and this is something you can look into for me so we don't have to go into further discussion on it today, gave the results to Diane as quarter-to-quarter, and was refused his ABC card. I'll leave it right there, and I'll get back with you on it later.
I'll have to check, because see, those things, I don't know why the ABC refused him, but that's the ABCs.
I just want to make sure that we follow the procedure. And I'll check with Diane in the morning. It was late this evening when I got that call.
Yeah. But see what it was? There's something that the city needed to do, then we corrected. If it's an ABC problem, then he'll have to correct it with that.
I think it's something we need to submit to it.
Yep.
But that's all I have. So, motion to approve?
Do.
And a second?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Chairman.
Thank you. Alter order, the February 7, 2013 Board of Commissioners meeting. All those who would, please join us for the pledge and a prayer. To Heavenly Father, we come to you and ask you for your guidance and your direction. We ask you to guide our minds and our efforts and our words, that they be focusing on the community's needs, their well-being, and for the outcome that is pleasing and successful and prosperous to the, prosperous to the community, prosperous to the community. We thank you for all the gifts that you've given us. Lord, let us be good stewards. We ask you to watch over the meeting and the people that are here. Bless those hearts in their homes. We ask all of this in Jesus' name. Thank you.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve.
Number first?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Any additions or deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is citizens' comment. We have Ms. Linda Young from 7314 Overby Road. Can approach the podium. Thank you. You have three minutes to share your comments. Welcome.
I understand the housing development on Overby Road is back on the agenda tonight, and I, for one, as a person who lives on this street for over 20 years, am 110% opposed to this development. I've stood before all of you before and shared my reasons. Among them, the traffic on an already incredibly busy street with the First Baptist Church and several backroads feeding into my street going out to Highway 100. The idea that you're planning to annex this neighborhood and the street into the city limits, but not my property, is unreasonable. Not that I want to be inside the property, because quite frankly, I don't see any benefits of that. I see city taxes, sewer fees, and those things aren't exactly positive motivating factors for me to be in the city limits. I believe that one of my, one of my neighbors on Overby Road said it best before all of you many months ago when we first discussed this, when he said that this neighborhood, this community, this city, needs to grow from the inside out, not from the outside in. So I'm asking you, on behalf of my friends and neighbors on Overby Road, to please take a long, hard look at what you're proposing with this development and do what's right for all of us as a community, not just for the benefit of a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is awards and recognitions.
Mayor Captain Sutton would like to recognize two new police officers.
Two members that are new to our family. Started last Friday. We had Russell Bernard, who came to us from the city of Dixon, and you got Terry Eminette, who was originally from Nashville, moved to Georgia for a while, became a police officer, decided to come back and join us here.
Excellent.
They prepared speeches for you.
Welcome.
Same, nothing like that.
Any other awards and recognition from the staff?
No staff.
Any from the board? Item number five is public announcements.
Mayor, just want to remind everybody about the emissions testing on Tuesdays at the Highway 96 fire station.
Any other public announcements from the board?
If I can add to that, I was, utilized that location this past week in discussion with the gentleman that was there running the testing with my probing on it. At times, if it rains, he has to close it down, because the equipment, if the wind blown the water in there. So I did call the city manager and ask him to look into possibly lowering some of that aluminum siding on the side of it that would protect it, so that we can keep it open all the time and not have to close it down. So, but they did a good job, in and out of everything.
Okay. Any other announcements? Thank you. Item number six is approval of the minutes. I need approval of the minutes from January 3, 2013 Board of Commissioner meeting.
Moved to approve.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is 6B, approval of the minutes for the January 17, 2013 Board of Commission meeting.
Moved to approve.
First and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 7A, old business. Discuss and or take action on park board recommendation. On February 4, the park board met, and the park board has voted to recommend for approval by the Board of Commissioner, the pine tree thinning draft number two that's been presented. Discussion?
Mayor, I had a couple of questions if this is okay. As I understand it, we're, we're only going to do part of that, right? We're not going to do, I mean, that was a pretty extensive map. I printed it and then left it at home. I apologize. But it's a pretty extensive map, several, several, and we're only going to do part of that.
3.2 acres.
And the thinning that they're describing is fairly significant thinning. Is that right?
From my understanding, I don't know if there's anyone here can speak, but from my understanding, it's 25 trees.
25 trees per acre or 25 trees total?
In the... The, I wish someone was this here to speak. 25 trees per acre.
So a total of 125 trees over like four or five acres?
The section that's being focused on here is the 3 point, the 3.2. At the bottom of the first page, start with the 3.2 acre area, which in turn, we plan to subdivide into three test spots, plots, or study sites, roughly an acre each. These would be logged into varying degrees. I won't read it all, but it says 25 trees per acre.
Okay.
To tie that question.
I was, I was concerned, and you addressed it. I was concerned that we can always cut more trees. So that we started very conservatively, and while I agree that they need thinning in order for the hardwoods to flourish, we, I didn't want to cut too many up front and then say, oh, we wish we'd have done it, you know. I'd rather be sure and start conservatively, but 25 trees per acre is, is, given our density in those, in those areas, would probably be, except for the fallen trees, you probably wouldn't even notice that they've been cut.
And that was under the recommendation to achieve the 60 basal, which there was an explanation of the basal, which is a cross-section area. Basil is a word that's used by foresters, and from my brief explanation, it was like holding a penny in a certain distance and counting the trees in that section, and there is a, sounds like a calculated science way that the word basal was created, and it had to do with what was healthy for the trees. Did I explain that correctly? Okay.
So we're just going, I'm sorry.
My last question was, just to make sure I understand correctly, we, we as the city, i.e. the staff, would then be in charge of, well, this has got to go to the conservation folks.
Still needs, yes, sir.
Okay. And if they approved, then it would come back to us, and then we as, we being the city, i.e. or the staff, we would determine who the contractor was, or if we were going to do it in-house, or we would determine all of that. That would, we're not, that wouldn't be imposed upon us from somebody else. Is that, did I read that right?
Correct. And it does say that all trees selected, this is a little bit to your question, and then something else about the trees. All trees selected to be downs will be identified and marked by a member of the forestry service.
Right.
So they're, they're not random. It's a, it's a specific which ones fit the basal issue of which ones will be cut. As far as whether it's done in staff or it's hired, that has not been determined, because once the plan is approved, then the action plan comes behind.
What's going to become of the logs? It's going to stay fallen?
Did you want to comment on that, Andrew?
It's my understanding they stay there, to become part of the habitat for more animals. It attracts, it attracts more creatures, animals, helps with the soil, that type of thing. Keith, is that, where's Keith here?
Now, with it, with it being the test sites, these would be logged to varying degrees, with one plot reduced to 90 basal, the other to 60 basal, and the third to zero basal. A zero basal site would essentially be clear cut of pines, with the exception of a few snags left for woodpeckers. Our goal in this is to create a natural prairie to be reseeded with a variety of native grasses and flowering plants. Depending on how well this works out, it could lead to our adopting, this is the next, a long-range plan for turning other portions of the park into prairies. Long-range objective is to increase the wildlife population by giving rise to a more diverse range of natural habitats than the park presently provides.
So we would be clearing the log?
Some would, some won't. It's like there's testing. Keith, speak.
Now, what Mike Berkeley suggested was that the, it would be a cut and leave system. We would cut the tops of the trees, the big branches, whether burn or chip, move them out. The logs would stay in place. They would be laid down in such a way that they're not, you know, on top of each other, like linking logs and stuff.
Well, I'm confused, because that's not what I understand it to say. What about the prairie and the grasslands and?
Well, that's a, that's one test site. They want to clear it out a little bit more and make it into a, a prairie-type thing to see if that's, and the test plots are to see how the exotic invasives take over and which way we wanted to go with that. And it kind of shows everybody a couple of different options in that, and that's why we're calling it test plots, just to see if everyone agrees on either just going to a straight 60 basal, or going to not as many, you know, cut out of that.
Okay. There was a 90, 60, and 0, but working with test sites then allows the knowledge, once it's done with exotic invasives and the replanting, of how the others would be better served, and that's why this is a, a beginning approved for the purpose of what we are required to do as the city with the park for the conservation easement, that we have a plan, a forestry plan, and this is a beginning step to say, we're doing these items of the test, and then being able to come with a final plan that then would be a longevity plan of how we're going to maintain and work through the health of the park. Does that say that right?
This is closely related to the advice that we have from the forestry person, beginning with, first, native grass and things of this nature. So I just want to make sure we didn't have 85, 80-foot trees stacked up somewhere along the ground you couldn't walk to if you wanted to. Okay. As long as we got plans for, that's my thought.
Okay. I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The second item that the park board recommendation, on the February 4, 2013 meeting, the park board voted and approved to recommend to the Board of Commissioners a go-ahead of the I-40 signage and promotion of Bowie Nature Park, with the initial fee being paid by Mr. Mark Dietz, and that the annual maintenance fee be paid from the park department budget as a line item of advertising and public relations.
Moved to approve.
Motion approved, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 7B, and I'll yield the floor to Commissioner Basel.
Thank you, Mayor. As requested in previous action, we, when I brought up the idea of entering into negotiations in an attempt to purchase the property that's for sale directly to the west of the building of City Hall, the property committee met, and after some discussion about potential uses in the future, we endorse unanimously, endorse allowing the city manager to enter into negotiations with the property owner or their representative on the purchase of that property. So I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to do just that.
Second. Any discussion?
I don't, let me know if I'm out. Or was there, was there a dollar limit put on that?
There was some parameters discussed in that by the committee. However, as is pretty much the practice in real estate, you don't announce your volume upfront. But there, there are some parameters, and I will be getting with the city manager on behalf of the committee to discuss those parameters. The reason that we would, we would do that at this particular point is that the money is not authorized. Should he be able to come to a tentative agreement with the landowner, he'll have to bring it back to us to approve and authorize the money.
I apologize. I do have that information.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number C is discuss and or take action on City of Fairview projects. It may not be needed, but I'd like to make a motion that the signs be all consistent.
And didn't you want him to add something to the, into that? City manager, was there something else to be added to that discussion?
To this, for the city projects? I mean, I can talk about anything you want to.
No, no.
Well, let's go with the motion on the floor.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, you do have to bring up. If you were ready, you had something to bring up. You just got the material from Dawn.
Correct.
So you think you had to give it to Larry, so you may not be ready.
I'm not.
Okay. Motion on the floor?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? I think we're getting tired. It's too early. All right. Item number 7D, second and final reading on Bill 2013-03. Does anyone have that for reading? Ordinance number 798, an ordinance to allow a one-time variance to the City of Fairview in the Policy and Procedures Manual adopted in Ordinance 615 dated April 6, 2006. Do we have to read the caption, or did I just read it?
You just read it.
Just right there. Okay.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Approval in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 7E, second and final reading on Bill number 2013-04, Ordinance Number 799, an ordinance to amend certain sections of the City of Fairview, Tennessee Policies and Procedures Manual. The City of Fairview, Tennessee Policy and Procedures Manual was originally adopted by Ordinance 615 dated April 6, 2006.
Moved to approve.
First and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to new business. New Business 8A, discuss and or take action on bids for Bowie Lake Road. City Manager Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, February 5, we opened the bids here at City Hall at 2:00 PM. We had seven companies that bid on our product, our project, and we have the low bidder of Tennessee Valley Paving at the amount of $111,897. What we would do now, and the staff is recommending this, the engineers recommended this, and if you approve this to go forward, we will discuss the appropriate bonds, request the appropriate bonds and insurance to be submitted for review and approval. And once that's done, the contractor signed the documents with the city, we will give them a notice to proceed, and we should, that should be about a three to four-week process, and this contract stipulates that construction will be substantially complete within 80 days of issuing the notice to proceed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 8B, discuss and or take action on Bill 2013-6, Ordinance Number 801, an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located at 7355 Overby Road, as shown on the City Fairview Geological Listing as Assessment Role Map 46, Parcel 44, from RS 40 to RS 15, a mixed-use pud, 108.41 acres.
Motion to approve. Second.
First, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Item number 8C, discuss and or take action on Resolution Number 04-13, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on changing the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located at 7355 Overby Road, as shown on the City of Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Role Map 46, Parcel 44, from RS 40 to RS 15, mixed-use pud, 108.41 acres.
Motion to approve.
For the record, Mayor, when would the hearing be?
I'm sorry?
When would the public hearing be?
Public hearing April 4, 2013.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 8D, discuss and or take action on removing and replacing a member of the Industrial Development Board. Commissioner Sutton.
Names, anything? We've got a position that has, the person has not attended in over two and a half years, and we're asking that we have a replacement person put on the, the board, Industrial Development Board, for the reason, we run very close at each and every meeting and not have enough there to, to take care of business. One of the, the suggestion that we have from, from some of the other members there was Mr. Ken Weaver, who's already on, he's in the chamber. He's already worked with the city, Dawn. Have you worked with Ken? You've worked with Ken on some stuff already, haven't you? And he would just be our recommendation. I'd like to know that he'd be placed on the board.
And he has completed an application and?
No. Do we need to post it for applicant?
I would think yes.
You have to do it like you do all the rest of it.
City manager, did you oppose that in 3:30?
Thank you very much.
And if he be application, then that sounds great. He's a good fellow, so.
I didn't, thank you.
Application, thank you. I would like to take this time to offer my condolences to the Hoppy family. Jerry Hoppy was very active in the community and has served the community well, and I just want to offer the condolences to his family.
Mr. Sutton, to take this action?
Well, we're going to take the action. At this first, second, we're going to need to say, we need to approve it and move forward with the application process.
Aye, second. Your motion.
So they can open up for applicants.
Do we have to remove the first motion that you made to hire him? Yeah.
The motion as far as the.
Would you remove the first motion and then make the, the second one?
Okay. And your motion is, sir?
To remove the person that's involved. Now, they hasn't been able to make the meetings and to move forward with fulfilling that position through advertisement and application.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a quick, a question real quick. Does that board not have time limits like the planning commission and all the boards? Okay.
It is. It's required by charter that we have these meetings.
Right.
But they're, they're few and far between, but we, since we've got the chairman that we have now, we've been able to meet more often, anticipate meeting even more often. So it's important that we have a core there every time we meet, and it's just very close.
You mean term limits?
Yeah, term limits.
Yes, they do. He just hadn't reached it yet. And the state statute.
Yeah, I know. I'm just curious, like, is it like all the other boards or whatever?
It just hadn't been reached yet, and I think that position will be filled out until September. Am I correct?
June of next year.
June of next year. It's when it'll be fulfilled. So we'll be putting somebody there until June of next year.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item 8E, discuss and or take action on project for Farmer's Market. Commissioner Sutton?
I'd like to, this is to move forward, I'm going to make a motion in a second, so that we can get started on the Farmer's Market area that we've discussed in the past, and I'd like to make a, a motion for us to instruct City Manager Hyatt to move forward with the planning and give us some ideas on the cost factors. Get with Mr. Jones. If you don't have that contact information, I can give it to you, so that we can start moving forward with the planning process for the Farmer's Market.
I would like to make a couple of comments, if I may. The Chamber of Commerce has worked very closely with Mr. Jones in the past. I know Ms. Evers was the one who kind of birthed the Farmer's Market 10 years ago, and it has been very successful with a few of your diehard locals that are really, really into the vegetables, and I appreciate them very much. But that's something that, you know, they are active in. He even has business cards that he's the president of the Farmer's Market and such. So I think they're, they're a group that is very dedicated and has shown their dedication through their offerings at the rec center. When you say about a plan and such, where are you seeing something of plan?
Well, we're just, the discussion that has been just out in the open, of course, if they're going to be a covered area for them to, to load and unload and have their produce to be set at, and just that type of situation, how many spaces do you think we're going to need? Whether it be 20 spaces, 30 spaces, 15 spaces? Is it going to be paved? Is it going to be paved here? Are we going to have gravel on the outside for parking? Just some of those ideas that we need.
Location, is that identified?
Would be over at the, at the, what school is that? Try, Tryon School.
Is that part of the PUD?
Not right now.
Okay.
We discussed that before, I think.
Before we approve to go forward and to initiate City Manager's time, we have a PUD that does not allow that specific. I'm not against what you're speaking of, I just don't want it to get too far where that may be the first step we need to take, if that's something that needs to be addressed. Dr. Rice, speak?
Yes, on the PUD, it is an amphitheater.
Yes, sir.
And if the.
And a parking lot.
Amphitheater were to serve the multi-purpose, which I think is the plan.
Yes.
It, it would.
Tie in together.
I think it would.
Okay, I wanted to go there for this purpose. Working with USDA, they specifically, and I would like, as you're charging the City Manager to move forward on that, to discuss with our grant writer, Angela, there is a USDA grant, the lady and people we met with in the conference room specifically said for municipalities, there is a grant to be offered for pavilion, for covered, for that purpose. So that is the direct route that we would be probably starting with, and hopefully that would be successful, for that thought and purpose. Did you make a motion?
That was my motion.
Do we second? We're in discussion, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, City Manager, items for discussion?
Mayor, actually, the only thing I have tonight, and looking forward at our Board of Commissioners meetings, the July 4th meeting is obviously on a Thursday, and I'd need to get direction where, or how, or what you want to do with that in the future. Don't have to do it tonight, just for you to be mindful of it as we move closer, so we can make sure it's posted properly.
Okay, any other miscellaneous updates? Go ahead.
I wanted to ask the City Manager, did we come up with a day yet for Mayfest, or any?
Well, we, we've talked about May 25th, but we've also got a group that we're interested in looking at that is scheduled for that day, but they can come the 18th, so we're kind of teetering between those two dates at this point, and probably by the first of the week, we'll have something more firm on that.
Have we looked at other things going on inside the county? Only one of those two days?
We sure have, yes, sir. We've been on top of that. There's no way to avoid everything, but, you know, I know there's something that goes on in Davidson County somewhere around that time, the horse race thing or something, I don't know what the day is.
If it be Iroquois, it's not a little thing. And, and we would not compete with Iroquois.
No. I don't know.
Not today.
Stick to checks.
Yeah. All right, any other updates, that's okay? Staff comments?
Too slow down.
For the month of January, the Police Department made 67 arrests. We made five DUI arrests during some special projects that we have through the Gare and Highway Safety Office. There was three arrests for domestic violence. 27 drug cases were, arrests were made also in the month of January. There was a total of 182 citations issued. We had 27 accidents, 24 of those were minor, three involving injuries, and we had a total calls for service of 636 calls for the month.
Just a question for you, if you don't mind, just to go along, this is something you probably can't answer, but maybe you can get the answer for us. How, how delinquent are we on receiving fines and court call? Where are you going, son?
I, I don't know what, what the term is, because if somebody's a day late, that's delinquent, so we're, we've got some out there. I don't have an exact figure, but I have talked to the court clerk and made that part of her performance evaluation is to work as diligently as she can in getting those collected, but I can get you a figure by the next meeting and let you have that.
There's some ideas floating around from different counties and cities on ways to collect those, because I know it's a civil matter when it goes into that, but if I'm not mistaken, it's, it's pretty substantial.
I believe it's as of January 1st or July 1st, they can, we can now have their license revoked.
Exactly. And that would result in a criminal citation.
Right.
But, just if you could, I'd appreciate it.
Mayor Commissioners, in January, which was our first month without the county contract, if you recall historically, we ran 30% of our calls out there. Of course, we're in our slow period of, of the year anyway, but we ran 42 calls, which ironically is 30% less than we normally run. Do I have any explanation for that? Update the Commission on the Safer Grant Firefighters, which we have to have employed by March 19th, only had 90 days to do it. We have three candidates that have been given their written oral agility, chief's interview, the physical drug screen, and background back. One of them will start tomorrow. He is already an EMT and has some fire training. On the 22nd, well, the second one will start, and he's a paramedic, and all he needs is his written test to get certified as a firefighter. And the third, which his background check came today, I interview him tomorrow, he's in the EMT school, paying for it with his GI bill, and has no fire training, so we'll have to send him to the academy. But we'll have all three of them on the job before March 19th. Thank you.
Question for you, Kim, if you slide either. It is, is, it's, it's a question that I have, and I've been approached with it several times before. What's the protocol for us sending a big fire truck on ambulance call?
Well, the, the guys ride the big fire truck to any call, because if they're out there on the ambulance call and they have to peel off and go to a fire, they've already got that truck with them.
But what's the protocol for us sending it in the first place?
With the ambulance?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's through dispatch. When the, they use EMD, and it's, it's on the computer, and as the dispatcher's on the phone, asks certain questions, the computer comes up, you know, difficulty breathing, et cetera, et cetera. At some point, it's going to pop up, send the fire truck with them, because you need more people.
Is, is, and I, you tell me, is there not a smaller vehicle we can send?
Well, if you did that.
Because it's basically for physical support, isn't it?
If they're out there in that little white truck, let's say, and we have a fire, they might come back to the fire station and get the fire engine. Does that sound logical?
To, to a certain point, it does, yeah.
Couldn't we go back and buy that mini pumper and send that mini pumper out on most of these calls?
I know it's expensive and everything, it's for sending a large truck out there.
If you ask me for hard numbers over the 10 or 15-year life of a mini pumper at 150 grand, would it would save that much money? Off the top of my head, I must say we're going to break even. So I think your answer to your question is yes. If you're breaking even, you're, you're not saving money, but you're saving wear and tear on the big truck. Once we get.
It lasts longer, and you, you don't have the operating expense of the big truck.
It would extend the life of the bigger truck, yes.
And in my understanding, correct, that the mini pumper in most instances are, say, in a high percentage of instances, up 80, 90%, something like that, can handle, can handle, is sufficient to handle the calls?
Yeah, that number is actually 98%. 98% of the fire calls, excuse me, scratch that, 98% of the calls for service in the fire department can be handled by two people and less than 100 gallons of water. Now, most of those is medical, no gallons of water, but understand, if you run 1,000 calls, over 900 of them would be the two guys. Once we get the third person on the shift, okay, you, then you'd have a guy staying back at the fire station, could bring the big truck, should we have a fire.
That was going to be my next question, as far as manpower to be able to do that, and send, because we've, we've got to be getting close to having enough people to be able to do that.
Yeah, we would, but if we get these three on duty.
Because most of these, these calls for these backup is just for physical support, am I right?
No. No, we also, all of our people, our EMTs are higher. If you remember, I've, I've brought this to your attention many years, the only volunteer department in the state that does BLS with our paramedics, several of them, it's ALS now, they're actually administering drugs. And when you get CPR going, things like that, it takes more than two. Somebody's got to drive the ambulance, leaving that paramedic in the back by himself. So very often, we'll send firefighters.
I'm just thinking about the total, the cost factor, and can we do it better and, and do just as good a job, once we get that manpower there?
Yes, that's correct.
Because if you have a big, if you have a big fire truck over here at the, someplace, and you get a fire, you're going to take it away anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So what was the need for it to be there? It was an absolute, or what, what, the criteria for calling that big truck out is what I'm, I guess is what I'm asking for.
Mm-hmm.
Because I've seen them pull up, two seconds later, they're on the way back.
Yeah, oh yeah, a lot of times you'll get there, be canceled. There's no sense in sitting there if you're not needed. But a lot of people overreact when they're on the phone, and you err on the side of that overreaction, always. It better be sent too much than not enough.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other staff comments? From the workshop? Oh, yeah, roadscape.
The planning department, we had reviewed two final subdivision flats, one for the road at Fernvale subdivision, it's a four-lock subdivision over on Fernvale Road, and a, just a minor subdivision flat for Mr. Roger Lampley, that, that flat was approved in-house and will be recorded tomorrow. The building permit department issued six building permits for the month of January. The total construction cost for those permits is $204,815. We issued 22 electrical permits. Complaint department received two complaints. We forwarded those to the appropriate department for resolution. We filled the 21 calls for service-related orders, forwarded them to the property department for work to be completed. The building codes department reviewed two commercial building plans for compliance, completed 40 building inspections, and issued four certificates of occupancy. The codes violation department received two complaints for the month of January. There were two violation letters sent out, two letters of failure to comply, and one citation written. And the mayor wanted me to update on the roadscape grant. Couple meetings ago, I brought information to y'all from Monique Hazelwood about changing the scope of the roadscape grant to take out the welcome signs from, from the scope of the work, and just do the landscaping of the, of the foreland and the cloverleaf on 196. She come back and said that we would have to ask for an extension on the contract. We asked for a 12-month extension, and we received the addendum to the contract today, and the contract expires April 25th, 2014. They are in the process of providing the environmental documents for us. Once they complete the environmental documents, they will give us a notice to proceed for design and preliminary engineering, and once we get that notice to proceed, we'll get with Lozen Associates for design, and once we complete the design process and get that turned back into TDOT for their approval, they will issue us a notice to proceed with construction. At that time, we can start construction and get reimbursed for the construction phase of the project.
Excellent question. In the design phase, could I just request that when that time comes, that we have some type of workshop called, possibly with our arborist, whether that be a preliminary meeting for a drawing or something that could be used as what the city trees are and what's permissible, even though we may have variants and such, to where we're not, I mean, we may be master gardeners, but there are master gardeners in the area that can be called upon. Do you know who that is, Ms. Eva, the master gardener? Get, there's one or two in town that have offered, there's, oh, Joan Stevens at Fifth Third Bank is one, and Miss Millicent and Renee Cashin. Just bringing those in, because, you know, for me to be discussing a plan is probably not very productive, but would like a participation part, but as you pull that together, be thinking about your committee, thought of committee of bringing in the community fellowship and being able to go over the plan, just thoughts for that. Any comments from the board?
Don, I picked on everybody else tonight, going on you just a little bit. Just a little brief discussion with the Walmart attorney that was here shortly, a little while back, to sign some final papers for us. He mentioned that you had been in discussion with the contractor. Is there anything you can share with us on that?
The general contractor is DBS out of Chattanooga. We will be having a pre-construction conference next Tuesday at 10 o'clock. They will probably start mobilizing sometime between now and then with their equipment. Once we have our pre-con, we've got all their, we've got their TDAC permits in place, we've got their TDOT permits, grading permits from TDOT, we've got all those copies in our files. Once we have our pre-con, and we've got the site development agreement signed, it's, it's been executed, from what I expect, and, and hear from DBS, they're ready to get rocking and rolling after Tuesday.
So you're stating for the record that Walmart is still on.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not like I got asked at church. Why did Walmart pull out?
Just ask them, the first thing they do is put a sign up, says Walmart opening soon, nine months or whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other staff comments? City Attorney comments?
Thank you, Mayor. In deference to my good friend, Commissioner Vassell, I promise you, my comments tonight will be the shortest of anyone on, that's made comments tonight. There is one thing, just an information thing I want to put out for the board, and I anticipated this question, and it wasn't asked, so I'm going to answer it anyway. The public hearing being April 4th is a rather long time from the first week in February. You will notice this more as we go along, due to the new state statute relative to annexations and to zoning changes, et cetera, et cetera. The, some of the public hearings relating to the zoning have to be pushed out so that the companion bills can fall in between them. And there may even be some times when those have to be changed, because if something happens to those companion bills, if they get pushed out, obviously, the others have to get pushed out. So I just wanted to put that out there for your information, this is first year of the new statute, so some of those things will get pushed out. That's all I have, and I made it short.
Thank you very much. Communication from the Commissioners, Commissioner Sutton?
I appreciate the job that everybody does, welcome the new police officers here, make sure you stay safe out there. I get positive comments from citizens all the time. Last night was an example, some people that live inside the city are very pleased with the way things are going, a couple suggestions, which is what I like to hear. So I think we're all available to the public, and if they want to send us an email or anything else, just let us know. And thank everybody coming out tonight, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Vassell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I, I guess this is to the, our, our county neighbors that have been to several meetings to express their concern about the subdivision out off Overby Road that's being considered. We voted very quickly without much discussion tonight, and, and it's pretty much on first reading, that's kind of the way we do things. There'll be a public hearing where you'll get to express your opinions if, if you wish to do so again, and then I imagine we'll have some deliberation up here, so I, I just kind of wanted to address that. But in, in thinking about that already, I, I wanted to share some things that I know that myself and Commissioner Sutton have at least done, and I think the other members have probably done many things along, along this line. There's no good way to say this, so I'll just say this. We're elected to represent the people of the City of Fairview. And while we like to try to balance what goes on around the city to where it's good for everyone, sometimes there's conflicts between what's good for the city and what's good, or maybe what's not as good for those around us, or maybe it's not even a good or bad situation, it's just simply what they would rather have done versus what's good for the city. So in trying to accomplish that, I know personally, and I know, and I guess Mr. Biata had to leave, but I know that we have done some things to try to settle in our mind before we had to make a decision about what's good for the city. It's obvious that if we can bring a housing. It's obvious that if we can bring a housing project to our city that has better-than-average housing, that allows rooftops for people to be attracted to our city, it goes hand-in-hand with what we're trying to do in terms of building a place that offers better conveniences to our citizens. And that is a benefit to those around us. I can imagine and empathize that when you bought your house 20, 30 years ago, you couldn't imagine what's going on in Fairview today. I moved here 14 years ago, and I can't imagine what's going on in Fairview today. They found us, and they're coming. And we've got to have places to, for them to live, or they'll just go right on by. And the last thing we want to be is passed up when our opportunity comes. So we've met with the water department, excuse me, to get their take on whether this particular sewer system that's being talked about is a good thing or a bad thing. I don't know, I'm not a sanitation engineer, I only know what the experts tell me. They tell me that Murphy's Borough runs on this system, and they have 40,000 customers and haven't had any trouble at all. I have one person shared with us at one of the previous meetings about Enzworth School having some difficulty. So I tried to do some research on that, and yes, they do pump more frequently than others might expect. However, they have grown tremendously from the original plan, and they are a business-type concern, they're a school. No particular residence is going to, you know, have the same level of sewage that Enzworth School has, with that many students there going on break all at the same time. This is a 10-to-15-year project. The people that are building this are not, if the project started tomorrow, they're not going to go out there and drop 300 houses in these 108 acres in the next four months. It's going to be build, and then see how that sells, see how that works, see what goes on with that. The city doesn't control the sewer system. I agree with the mayor, and did some campaigning, attempt to persuade the commissioners at that particular time not to sell our sewer system. However, that decision's gone, that water's underneath the bridge. And WADC, and on a state level, TEDC, I believe is the right acronym, they will be responsible for ensuring that water system is up to par, operates, and doesn't do anything to, what I've heard from the couple of folks that talked to me about it, there's the concern about the stream, I guess, that runs behind the subdivision and it's getting polluted. I do know that if tragedy was to happen, it would get cleaned up. Yes, it would be inconvenient, but if we can rebuild Alabama, Mississippi, and Louisiana after the BP oil spill, we could probably take care of a house sewage septic tank problem here in Fairview. So I'm not trying to make small of that. If you're the one being affected by it, it's a big deal to you. But in the grand scheme of things, as we make our decision, I just want to remind you that we've got to make our decision based upon pluses and minuses for the city of Fairview. And while we are interested, and hopefully we'll try to incorporate your concerns so that we provide the highest level of safety for you, ultimately, I can't make my decision on that. I have to make my decision on what I hear and what I'm provided in terms of what's good for the city. Now, I've not made my mind up, I've had many conversations, and I look forward to hearing what the folks have to say at the public hearing on April the 4th. But I will tell you, that's how I'm going to make my decision, and I thought you needed to know that. So that you wouldn't think that when you came up here, that there was at least one of us, and I think all of us, are very much listening to what you're having to say. It's just that we have to come at it from a little different point of view. Our job is not one of equity here, our job is one of doing what's best for the city. Now, in her comments, and I apologize, Ms. Young, is that correct? Ms. Young made a comment that I can't let pass, and this is not, I'm not picking on her, I've heard this 1,000 times since I got here. And for the life of me, no one can tell me why they don't want to be in the city of Fairview. And I'm going to just talk just a minute, and I apologize for the length of my comments, but I usually just say no comment and move on. So I've been saving it up for six years here. I always think that that comes from a place of, I don't want to pay city of Fairview The city of Fairview's tax rate average, and I probably got my numbers off, because I don't have current numbers, is somewhere around $300 on average per house. That would depend upon the value of your house, that would depend upon, some pay less, some pay more, but our average house in the city of Fairview is around $175,000, and that's about $300 a year. So.
For city?
The city, in the city.
Not county?
So, so, inside the city, those folks with their $300, they not only pay for their police department, their fire department, their street department, Bowie Park, the historical village restoration, the economic development of Publix, Walmart, the other, the peripheral things that are coming in here, and provide support to the schools, all of those things benefit the folks outside of the city too. And so it just bothers me when I hear, I don't want to participate because I don't get any benefit from it. And I guess from my point of view, I understand that, that they don't want to participate because they don't want to pay the extra $300. But you are getting benefits from it. And I just encourage you to think about that, because the other benefit that you're not getting is that we, as the board, have a responsibility to our citizens, not to you. So you may get the Publix, you may get to shop at the Walmart, you may get to be, if you live on Cumberland and happen to be that part of Cumberland that's not in the city, you may get, you may get some benefit by driving every day on the part of Cumberland that's in the city. You may, you know, if you like to attend Bowie Park, you may get the benefit of Bowie Park and everything being provided, the law enforcement presence, because we have a deal with the county, and we answer calls for the county. If you got in a world of hurt on Overby and you weren't in the city, we're not going to stop at your neighbor's line with the police department and say, we're not going to come help you. We're going to come help you. And we all know that we just went through a fire contract deal, and through the efforts of our fire department and our chief, and this board's support, every one of you is going to pay less fire insurance next year than you would have. Your fire insurance was going through the roof, because you weren't going to be covered by us. So it always bothers me, and I guess I picked tonight to share with y'all, it always bothers me when some of the finest people I know, personal friends of mine, live in the county, say, I don't really want to be in the city because I don't want to be part of that. I don't want to pay that, I don't get any service. From where I sit, you get a pretty good amount of service. And we would love to have you join us, because then it would be our responsibility to be as much interested and much concerned about where you're coming from as where the Biadas are in their construction business and what's good for the city. And I thank you for listening.
Commissioner.
Thank you. I will try to make mine short. I will, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming. I know that basically, it's not the funnest thing to do on a Thursday night, and especially those that come to planning and commission, and just being involved in your community, I think that's really important. And once again, your comments and your opinions always matter to us. It's one of those things where we can't always, like, make the decision that you want us to, but it is important to know what the people of the community think, what they want. So I just wanted to say that. And then also, with the passing of Mr. Hoppy, also, we had a very beloved Mr. Johnson, Philip Johnson, that was at the high school for many years, and so I would like to, and there was another family on the same day, we had three losses, I don't remember the other gentleman, because I didn't know him personally, but anyway, so those families are in my prayer. I know there's going to be some difficult times, and I guess that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sutton?
I ask for just one more moment. I'm just going to add one thing to what Commissioner Vassell said. We did go down and have a brief meeting with the water authority in Dixon, and the gentleman there that's over that department said he is more than willing to come to any of our meetings and answer any questions that anybody may have. I don't have the answers. He was very positive about it, but he understands that you have questions and concerns, and they should be answered. So he will be available to us, he was more than willing to come to the meeting and answer any questions. The last thing that I have to say is, if you notice, Commissioner Johnson's not here tonight. He's had a little bit of illness, a little bit of surgery, and I'm happy to announce he's doing just fine. And we'll be back here by the next meeting, I think, but he is on the road to recovery. So we all wish him well.
Thank you. City manager, I'd like to make a comment about our follow-up meeting for EMTAS. We did discuss that we were not done, our time got away from us, and I would like to reschedule that if possible. If you can see if the 22nd or the 26th, there was some comment made about the gentleman coming from work or after work in some more convenient times. So if you can check on that and maybe give us some options, that would be within the next 30 days, 22nd or 26th. But again, I thought there was something said, maybe he prefers Friday, because he's an out-of-town person, I'm not sure. So if there's another day or what, if you can, just within the next 30 days, if we can do a follow-up, please. My next is, I'd like to get everybody in TV land and in the audience. March 19th, we are having our Business Expo, it's the Fairview Chamber of Commerce Business Expo, but this year, we have addition, we have added a job fair. And the Fairview Community Action Partnership has partnered with the chamber, and what that will be offering the public on March 19th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Fairview Middle School, is not only a meet and greet the local businesses that are supporting and doing promotional development, but also walking around the booths, getting information, and getting to know your businesses in the area, but it's also going to highlight for job fair opportunities. So what we're trying to do is not only give people fish, but teach them how to fish. The job fair will focus on helping people with resumes and giving them support systems of where there are jobs, having companies in our area and around the area to come that are physically hiring, and would be discussing with people applications or hiring processes. We'll also have the Career Coach, which is an outreach, I can't put the name, but they will be there, and what they do is, they are a mobile unit that was offered to us, and they will actually have access. So if you know anyone who's looking for a job, looking for a better job, that could benefit from this event, this is an outreach by Fairview Community Action Partnership, which is initiator of the Helping Hands and the Back to School Bash, and again, the Chamber of Commerce Business Expo. It's proved to be a great night, free food, free goodies, free giveaways, and education. So hopefully, you, someone you know, or both of you will show up March 19th, 4 to 8, at the Fairview Middle School. And the last thing is, next, the 14th is Valentine's Day, and just wanted to let everyone know that I love you. Ask for adjournment? Second? All those in favor? Meeting adjourned, thank you for your time.